Yeah, we're having arrived. Welcome to the Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, September twenty fifth. A reminder that the meeting is being recorded. The recording will become available on the Town's website in the next couple of days. And start by calling a roll call. Chip Tarbell.
Yes, here.
Dave Hatfield.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Here.
Mickey Feeley. I see you, Mickey. Don't worry about it. We'll, we'll, Mickey is present. Kasumi Humphries.
Yeah.
Uh, Kirsten Brown.
Here.
Greg Demersian.
Here.
With that, I'm going to ask our clerk, Joe Pride, to read the call of the meeting. I'll try to call it up here.
Sure thing. Consistent with the governor's orders, extended certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to this meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number. One, three, oh, one, seven, one, five, eight, five, nine, two, meeting ID, eight, eight, three, one, one, seven, seven, three, one, seven, six, passcode nine, eight, zero, four, eight, nine. Please only use dial in on computer. And not both, as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. In compliance with the Americans with Disability Act, this location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield, Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodation, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Renon, town engineer at seven, eight, one, two, four, six, six, three, zero, eight, as far advanced of the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your requests. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier for you. One, continued hearings, two. Twenty-five dash eleven, Michael P. Constantino. Application for a party agreement agreed for review of a decision made by the building inspector dated July tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Pursuant to MGLC forty A, section A of the, of Article ten, section one ninety dash sixty-five of the Wakefield zoning bylaw related to an accessory, accessory structure on the premises. The property is shown as map nineteen lot parcel. W thirteen A of the assesses map is located at thirty-five stack, uh, Stark Avenue. Three, twenty-five dash twelve, twenty-five dash thirteen. Matthew C. Chambers and Caitlin T. Kavanaugh, application for a variance under Article ten, section one ninety dash sixty-six. Seeking a variance from the requirements of Articles, uh, eleven, I mean, excuse me, Articles six. And Table two of the Wakefield zoning bylaw related to the proposed addition to be constructed onto an existing single-family dwelling, application for a determination and or finding with respects to a continuation and extension of non-conforming uses under Article nine, section one ninety dash fifty-eight of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. Related to a proposed addition to be constructed onto an existing single-family dwelling. The property is shown as ma- map ten lot parcel seven E of the assesses map is located at five Sylvan Avenue. Four. Twenty-five dash fourteen, twenty-five dash fifteen, Barry F. Fennel and Julian Fennel, application for determination and or finding with respects to a continuation and extension of non-conforming uses under Article nine, section one ninety dash fifty-eight of the Wakefield zoning bylaw related to a proposed addition to be constructed on the extinct existing single-family dwelling. Application for a variance under Article ten, section one ninety dash sixty-six. Seeking a variance from the requirements of Article six and Table two of the Wakefield zoning bylaw related to a lot. And a proposed addition to be constructed onto the ex- existing single-family dwelling to propose. The property is shown as map thirty lot parcels forty-eight C of the assesses map is located at thirty-nine Curtis Street. Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Joe. As is our custom. We've had a couple of, uh, requests for continuance. I'll bring those up first, so folks that are here for those matters, um, can move on with their evening. First one is for thirty-three West Water Street. It's a letter dated September twenty-fifth from Attorney Brian McGrail. Yeah, Mr. Chair, please continue this matter until your meeting of October ninth, twenty twenty-four. And that we are still working on items requested by the board. Looking for a motion to continue that matter till October ninth.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue the matter at thirty-three West Water Street to our meeting on October ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded. Any further discussion? Dancing on regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip. You're muted, Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
Matter's continued, uh. The next one is for thirty, uh, case twenty-five eleven. Thirty-five Stark Ave. Letter dated today from Attorney Brian McGrail. Please continue this matter to your meeting of October twenty-third twenty twenty-four. And that they're working with the building in the inspector to, in an effort to address the matter stated in his letter. Looking for a motion to continue that matter till the twenty-third.
Question, was that one of our new cases tonight?
It is.
Okay, so we're.
It's the one, it's the one application for the party agreed.
Yeah, right, okay. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was the the same case.
Yeah, if I can just interrupt quickly, did I have an extension on that too, Mr. Chair? He's gonna get.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. I'm reading off my phone.
Thank you.
Please let this letter confirm the applicant has agreed to extend the time for the board to render any decision until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So we're looking for a motion to continue to the twenty-third of October. And to confirm the applicant has agreed to extend the time for the board to render decision to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Uh, Mr. Chair, you've done it well. So moved, uh, motion to continue and extend as requested, um, by the applicant.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded. Any further discussion?
Just a quick question, Brian, what's the timeline on appeals? Is it ninety days as well?
It's a hundred days from the fi- from my filing.
Okay.
The application, which went back to August, that's why. So you still have plenty of time, but stuff to do with the Conservation Commission, it looks like, as they send correspondence in the building inspector.
Okay. Thanks for that.
Thank you.
All right. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Great. Seeing hearing, no more further discussion, regular voting members. Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes. Matter is, uh, continued in the, uh, matters extended to the thirty-first. I think I forgot to take attendance. Did I not do that?
No, you did.
We did.
Okay. All right, so moving on the agenda to continued hearings, uh, well, case twenty-four, ten, which is the one nineteen, the Han Street. Uh, forty B application. Just a really quick update from Chip and I. There was a subcommittee meeting on Monday evening. Uh, the applicant had made some amendments to the application related to the driveway and, and the site plan and, and pushing the building back further off the street. They proposed to reduce the number of units from one hundred to ninety-two. Um, not speaking for Chip, but I think it reflects that we, we found that inadequate. We, we asked them to go back uh, to the owner and to significantly reduce the project. The owner was out of the country. The owner was returning this Sunday. They promised to meet with the owner. Um, and to possibly bring the owner to a next subcommittee meeting to discuss the size of the project and other deficiencies related to safety and, um, you know, not meeting the context of the neighborhood in terms of the size and scale of the project. And with that, uh, they extended and have submitted a letter to extend the deadline uh, to October thirty-first. So, uh, Chip and I expect to, to see them after they get to meet with their ownership group this, after this weekend in the subcommittee. Um, but that's where that stands. Chip, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you did a great summary. I would say they made some changes, but not enough considering what we've heard from the public and from what we've heard from you as the board. Um, and we sent them back with the mission to make significant changes. So I think there will be another subcommittee meeting uh, before our next meeting, and I think we'll know a lot more after that meeting.
Right, and, uh, uh, Chip and I were very, I'll just end it with this. We're gonna look to extend this to, um, the next meeting, just for the sake of a possible check-in. But if we don't see significant changes, we're, we're gonna move for a vote on, uh, prior to the extension uh, at our meeting on, uh, October twenty-third. So we've left enough time. Case there's something that evening that happens, a blackout or whatever, to go into the next week to have a special meeting, but that we put them on notice that we expect significant, uh, changes. Or the, the, the matter will come to a vote on October twenty-third. So with that, I'm looking for a continuance, uh, we'll, we'll continue to October ninth. I'm not sure the, the, we'll be able to squeeze in a subcommittee meeting between now and then, but I think we should at least put it on the ninth agenda as a placeholder.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that we continue this matter to our October ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting. And, um, accept the applicant's request to extend the time for us to hold the public hearing to October thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Hearing seeing on, uh, regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes. Matter's continued. Next up on the agenda, case twenty-four, twenty, thirty-two, Nahand Street. Uh, I thought I saw Mr. Haverty somewhere there. He is. Uh, Mr. Haverty, uh, we received the materials that your team sent in on Friday. Uh, I think we should go over those, um. And then we'll need to discuss after we, we talk about that and take public testimony. How we might move forward with this. I saw that, uh, your team also sent something to Lieutenant Anderson at the Traffic Advisory Committee. To be my, I speaking for myself. I'm not gonna take a vote until we hear back from the Traffic Advisory Committee, and I think other board members will want that as well. Um, so that, that has to happen before, uh, anything I think happens here at our board. But we can discuss that at the end of your presentations and again, public comment. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to you and your team to, uh, go over the material that you sent in on Friday to the board.
Chair, uh, as we had promised at the last meeting, we have Phoenix Architecture, can you hear me?
Yeah, you were, you were a little quirky there for now, but the end, you're, you're coming in more clearly.
Okay, good, thank you. So I, as I stated, at the last meeting, we had promised that Phoenix Architecture would be submitting revised plans that chopped off that bump out on the building that the board had indicated was problematic for it, uh, further reducing the number of units by an additional two units, which makes the total reduction in the size of the project, uh, more than thirty percent. Um, so at this point, I would have, um, either Andrew Jones or Peter Sandors from Phoenix Architecture. I know they're both on whichever one wants to present these plans.
Thanks, Paul. I'll present. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair and Board Members. Andrew Jones, representing Phoenix Architects. Let me pull up my screen and we can get going. Can I go and see?
Yes.
Excellent. So, uh, as Paul mentioned, the biggest, uh, change was, uh, re- reducing the units and taking off the left-hand wing of the building. Um, now total, uh, units are twenty-two. And addition to that, we actually were able to rearrange the hallways and do some internal changes to add to, uh, a few more two bedrooms and a few less one bedrooms. So it'd be in twelve one-bedroom units, seven two-bedroom units, and three three-bedroom units. Um, just so you guys understand, the previous building that was twenty-four units that we presented was eighteen one-bedroom, three-two bedroom, and three-three bedroom. So we're looking at five more two bedrooms and then seven less, uh, one bedrooms. So here, very similar to what we've always been presenting, is a street scape graphic. So here you see in the new building. And here you see in the old, and what we've removed is this whole wing here. Um, besides that, you'll notice a slight adjustment. We end up dropping the brick veneer down. Um, the main reason why we carried that was over to this parking garage with the reduction of that and also the reduction in units. We decided material-wise, cost-wise, uh, to drop it basically to shelf right underneath the, uh, first floor windows. Still feel it does really good job at, um, presenting materials and still very appealing from the street. So as you can see, very similar, uh, layout, but this whole left-hand side got removed. Um, and then you're starting to see that on, on the first floor stays the same. But we began to look at trying to get a few more two-bedroom units. So this is a two-bedroom unit, this is a two-bedroom unit as well, and then one over on the left-hand side. This whole wing stays the same as the previous, um, presentation. And this basically just repeats besides the, um, manzard bump oats and the dormers. And then the only other adjustment that should be noted, because we lost, lost the wing, general roof overhang over the door just for coverage. And then we also ended up going to a column-style support over the rear wing. So very similar to the front porch columns. You can start to see it across. And then all the materials are still the same. That's pretty much it. I'm happy answering questions.
Board members' questions, comments?
Andrew, can you review that column thing again? That was a little quick. I just want to make sure I got that.
Yeah, no problem. So y- you can see these columns in the front. We ended up carrying them to the back over the, basically where the parking is. You'll see in the previous layout where the brick was, we had done arches before. So just a little bit of a difference in, uh, the look and how it's being supported.
I guess the question I have, Andrew, is what, who's presenting what this did to the parking count? What this does to the green space and site? Uh, and was this, because those were two areas. How this fit into the neighborhood, which it's still big compared to everything around it. Um, it still has cars coming out probably into queuing off of the lights uh, at at Main Street, um. So I'm just curious, from a site standpoint, what knocking off that side did?
And, Mr. Chair, to respond to that, uh, Rich Williams from Williams and Sporajus is here, and he will go over the changes to the civil plans.
So, and then with that, Chip, what I'd like to do, I, I totally agree with your point on the cars going out into the queuing. But I'd like that they sent information into the TAC. I'd like them to weigh in on that, so we.
Oh, absolutely. I'm just, that was just kind of one of my things, like what green space not fitting into the neighborhood.
Yeah.
All the things that we've been harping on for, and I appreciate the reduction, and it seems like we've come little pieces, little pieces, little pieces, but I just don't know if another two units made any significant difference to the site.
Well, overall trips went from one forty-six to one hundred, just at a raw number. I mean, you.
Yeah, but I don't want to talk about traffic like for TAC, but I want to see if, you know, circulation was an issue. Green space was an issue, recreational space was an issue. I want to see if any of that's changed. So, as, as long as the, 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 um, civil is gonna make a presentation, I'm fine with architecture at this point.
That, anybody else on architecture before they move on to site and site civil? Okay, hearing seeing none, let's, let's move on to, um, Mr. Williams then.
All right, good evening. Uh, i- is it okay if I share my screen?
Please do.
Okay. Uh, so the, the piece of the building that was removed was, um, in the prior plan over the parking. Uh, that's no longer there, but the parking is still there. Uh, so there is no change there. Uh, in the aware of the building, we were able to add, um, some visitor spaces. They were, they were converted from, um, dedicated, uh, tent spaces to visitor spaces, so, um, i- i- now there are six spaces. We were able to add a, a, a landscape island with, uh, vegetation in it, a tree and, and some shrubs. Um, and we also were able to add, uh, one, uh, temp space for, uh, uh, for temporary parking. Um, a- and aside from that, the, the site is essentially, um, the same from a, from a footprint standpoint.
So, so Rich, that temporary space, that's for like Amazon and FedEx deliveries, things of that.
Correct.
Correct.
So just out of curiosity, so I can know your guys' process. Have you tried to position this building anywhere on the site farther away from the road, so it's not jumping up as, as much as it is along the Han Street? So that there may be parking on a couple, I mean, ha- have you played checkers or chess with this thing and moved it around at all?
I'm gonna let the rest of the team answer that question. I apologize. Uh, I'm standing in for Chris Sporajus tonight, and I was not part of the original, um, the decisions to, you know, where to lay out the building.
I can say Chris and I have kind of worked back and forth. I think what ends up happening is a reduction in parking. Um, as you can see, if w- we shifted the building left, you'd be losing that whole row of parking.
What happens, what happens if you just shifted it back?
And moved the parking that was in back to the front? I don't know. I'm just, you know, one of the things about it.
I can answer that question. If, if you move the building back and remove that row of spaces behind the building, then you need, in the front, you need a parking space and an aisle. Um, so you need another twenty-two, twenty-four feet, uh, which, you know, I don't think works.
Well, one of the things that you've heard is that the building is too big, doesn't fit into the neighborhood. And one of the things in order to reduce that is to get it back away from the street. So I don't know, it looks to me like a, like a simple move the parking behind it. That comes in front of it. Everything else just slides, but I, I'm no civil engineer for sure. But, you know, I'm just looking at creative ways that either have been or haven't been looked at yet, and, you know. It's still too big and doesn't fit into the neighborhood, in my opinion, so I'm just looking to ask questions that might help have a little bit of a different thought process.
Yeah, I'll just re- repeat, you know, aside from tricking the building, which I'm not gonna get into, uh, if you slid it back, it would, it would not, not help that the, um, you, you, you'd lose that row parking.
Chris and I have looked at it a few different ways, and we always came back to this, um, layout.
Now, um, m- Mr. Chairman, um, those parking spaces used to be under an overhang? Is that correct? What if, um, these parking spaces were under an overhang? And that space could be um, swing space, so you can move around, um, the box itself. And then you'd have to lose three, three or four units. But it would be more appropriate. Did you look at that?
I, I will say that we have gone to the limits of what we can do in terms of reduction of units, um. We're really, really stretching the boundaries of what is economic for this project. And any further reduction would, would blow well past what we can possibly do. So, we're, we're certainly happy to, you know, sharpen the pencils and see if there's a way of addressing comments that are, that are made. But th- there's no opportunity for further reduction in the number of units.
There's no, there's, there's still no open space here at all. There's, there's an island with a tree in it. And, and that's been my issue from the beginning. Um, and when we have the issues of it's too close to the street, there's too many units, it's too big, and then having no open space. Um, I know that's up against your poor, uh, pro forma. But, um, I don't have your pro forma, so that holds less weight with me than maybe with you. It's too big.
Well, the only thing that I would say, and then again, Mr. Chairman through you, um, we came in originally, uh, proposing a thirty-two unit building. We've reduced it now down to twenty-two units. It's a very significant reduction. Um, and if the board can't find a way to see fit to approve this, we're gonna be forced to take an appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee. And if we do that, in order to cover the costs of that litigation, we're going to have to go back to an original design somewhere between twenty-two and thirty-two units. It, that is, there's no restriction on us going back to any one of the different designs that we have discussed throughout this process.
Other than they were deemed unsafe by the Traffic Advisory Committee, uh, Committee. Other than that.
Well, again, the Traffic Advisory Committee can provide whatever opinion it wants. The question is whether or not that that is sufficient to be a local concern that outweighs the regional need for affordable housing.
Yes, whether or not safety's, um, sufficient.
Well, whether or not that is an actual safety concern.
Whether or not that matters to our review, which it does.
Well, again, we can just agree to disagree on that subject. The question is, if, if you don't feel like you are in a position that you can approve this as it is currently designed at the number of units currently proposed, then we're gonna be in a position where we're going to have to take an appeal. And if we do, we're gonna go for a project that is greater than twenty-two units.
So our last Traffic Advisory Committee came back saying it wasn't safe.
Right, but Mickey, they, we're asking TAC to review this now, so.
So, Mr. Havery, I, I, I appreciate you making the point. But you can go back to the state, and then the town can come back after you and appeal that and put this in court as well. So there's not, there are some levers the town has here itself. So i- if you want to get into a round robin on that, your point's well taken. But, you know, it's, we're, we're trying to figure this thing out. So trying to put the proverbial gun to our head with the stated, you know, committee.
That's not what I'm trying to do, Mr. Chair. But what I'm trying to express is that we have extended significantly throughout this process. I mean, this is a, a more than thirty percent reduction in the, the original proposal.
I get that, I get that, but.
And, and we have reached the point where we can't reduce to, in order to have an economic project. And at the end of the day, we've got to go through final approval with a subsidizing agency. And that subsidizing agency has to determine that this is a fundable project. And if it's not, we don't get to move forward.
I hear you. So I, I think what, before we got into this round robin on all the processes after this board makes a decision, what I was hearing, is there a way whether, if you want your twenty-two units to find a site plan that has some green space, because I agree with Mickey. And I agree with Chip. And I agree with the other board members that brought this up. You're going to put twenty-two units on this site. And there isn't even a place for a person to go outside and set up a chair and sit down. You know, the, these little trees in the parking lot, nobody's gonna use those spaces. It's nice to see a tree, but there, it's not usable open space for the residents of this building. Is there a way, I've heard from Andrew that they've looked. I'd like, you know, we, we work with forty B applications all the time. We pass them all the time. We have a record of working with people. I appreciate the unit reduction, but there's still some things here that I think we want to work through. And this open space has been something, I mean, Mickey's been the champion of it, but it's been also something that all the board members have brought up. To put twenty-two units on there and not have the residents any place to go outside doesn't seem right. It's a big building for this neighborhood. It doesn't fit within the context. I get that. You don't want to reduce it. Look at the site plan. Find a better site plan to provide some green space and can accommodate the parking. That's, I think, a, a pretty clear directive that you're getting from this board. We don't want to end up in all those processes either, Mr. Havery. It's not good for anybody. So.
Chair, the, the reason an applicant is willing to work with the board during the local hearing process is to avoid tho- those appeal processes, because they're expensive, they're lengthy. Nobody wants to go there, but far often, you know, far too often, that's where it winds up. We're trying to avoid that. What I would say in terms of.
Not in our town, Mr. Havery, it doesn't end up that way. Since my time on the board. Since my time on the board, and it's been a long time, we have worked through and approved every forty-B that's come before us. So that doesn't ring true with me. Now, some of the board members have been on longer, maybe it did then, but I've been on the board a while. And we have worked through every single forty-B to an approval. So far too often, maybe in other towns, but not in Wakefield since I've been here. So. Yeah, we, we, again, we've got a proven track record of working with applicants on these fortyBs to reach a solution. So.
Yeah, Mr., Mr. Chairman, if I could, does it make any sense to? Allow one person to work with Mr. Bur- Sparages and Andrew? To just, just. Offline. So that we're not redesigning it here.
Yeah, I'm all for it. I'm, I'm, I'm. Be happy to hear from other board members. I'm only one voice here. I happen to be chair, but that doesn't really mean anything. It's one voice.
To check, can I, can I ask a question on the parking? Where, what's the number that we're at right now? Paul, do we, do we have an excess of parking?
Definitely overparked. We, we are, we have more parking spaces than what your zoning by law requires. And certainly more parking spaces than what reality would require for this type of development. Uh, Rich, do you know exactly?
Yeah, we have forty-one and we need thirty-three.
So you could get rid of seven. So you could get rid, I, I know no one wants to get rid of parking, but I. If you get rid of the seven spaces on the left-hand side, you can shift that building over, whatever that is, twenty feet. I brought that point up way back when, if you were to get rid of those. That chunk of the building, which you did, you could move, you can get rid of those seven spots. And shift the building to the left. The, the width of that parking depth, and then you put your green space on the right. I brought that up a couple of months ago. I don't know if you thought about that. I know no one wants to lose parking, but, um, fifty-fifty, I figure. Lose parking, but you gain, you gain, you know, your green space, so.
Well, and that, yeah, Joe, I, I think these are all great ideas, however. To be more efficient, I think it should be offline. And toss all these ideas around and come, and hopefully come back with something. You know, if they're twenty-two is their end number. Then can we do something with the site that makes it more palatable? And that T A C can still might or might not live with, but that would be a better, better thing for them as well.
And we're happy to have that conversation.
Good, because I think it's going to take some time. Again, I saw that you, you, you made a proactive step to submit some more information to T A C, which is appreciated. They've got to chew on that a little bit and do that in a public meeting. And at their next meeting, so we're going to want to wait till we hear back from T A C about perceived. About the safety elements of this project. So I don't think anyone on this board wants to take a vote without hearing back from T A C. So I think we have some time per Chip's suggestion. For, we can appoint one board member. Uh, to, to sit with, uh, Andrew and Mr. Sparages or Mr. Williams and, and. Noodle some of the stuff that Joe said and other ideas.
Need to do that, Mr. Chair.
When did, by the way, when did you extend the, uh, what kind of extension did you give us? I can't recall.
It, I, off the top of my head, I don't recall the exact date. I think it was maybe the fourteenth or the fifteenth. After your next meeting.
Yeah, my notes say the eleventh, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, well, we'd have to address that.
Monday, after the next, yeah, yeah. We'd have to bunk that out, maybe to, at least to the end of the month and, you know, because again, they got to get on the T A C agenda and we got to hear back from them and. But, so. If they're willing to do it and extend it just for that process to run its course, then. We work with them offline, potentially in the interim to just kick around some ideas.
And I, I don't think it will take long, Mr. Haverty, either. We're going to come to some resolution or we're not, and that'll become obvious fairly quickly.
Sure. I, I'm going to reach out to my client and confirm he's willing to do that.
All right, any other comments, uh, site plan or anything else is presented from the board?
I'm happy to take that challenge on this, because I feel pretty, pretty, um. Strongly about that that would help. With Joe's idea of reducing parking or something to, that we can look at this thing creatively.
Yep, okay. Anybody else? Chip, you, you're going to win that, uh, nomination.
I figured as much, but without, without, uh. Without our old soul here, somebody has to take that, that junk and Zoom makes it a lot easier.
But, Mr. Chair, I, I heard back from my client. He's definitely willing to extend, so why don't I give you an extension to the end of the month, end of October?
Thirty-first?
October thirty-first, yep, and I'll get that to you in writing.
Thank you. All right. Any other board members, comments, questions, or anything else you want to present tonight, Mr. Havery?
Nope, nothing else for tonight.
No other comments, Mr. Chair. So we're going to continue the night, just as a matter of course, in case there are.
I got, I got to open the public comment.
No, no, I'm just saying, we, just as long as we're talking extension. So we got the extension, but just want to agree with Mr. Haverty that. We'll continue the night in case there's updates. If there isn't, then it'll get continued to the twenty-third, but at least we.
I think we put a placeholder there for sure.
Okay. Sound good, Mr. Haverty?
Sounds excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Yep, okay, with that, if there are members of the public here that would like to comment on this. Please use the raised hand function in Zoom and I will call on you. I see Karen McMaster has her hand up.
Hi, thank you. Karen McMaster, twenty-five Nahant Street. Um, I just want to. Follow up and thank the board for dealing with me and being patient and again with the developer. I think the problem is why we can't settle this forty Bs, because honestly, it just doesn't belong here. Like you guys said, you have a great track record of working great with everybody from the beginning. It's just too big, just because you purchase. And you want to put something that big, that doesn't mean it belongs there. Yep, you've done a thirty percent reduction, but look at that scale that Andrew put up there. Look at the two houses next to it. You're, you're a car length away from the person, the house next to it. Again, it's too big. I think you could have had your townhouses built by now. I, I, I just don't understand. I'm not a developer. I don't understand the cost, but again, I appreciate everybody trying to work on this. But it's just still too big and it doesn't belong there. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Kayla?
Hello, Kyla McKay Smith, forty Nahant Street, um, a butter. The, um, driveway away from the proposed, um, development. Um, what Karen said, just looking at the site plan, the one that shows. Where the proposed footprint of the building would be completely over all of the lawn that there is right now. And the small would have been affordable house when it was sold, uh, at thirty-six Nahant Street. Um, the footprint is over six thousand square feet and our three-story house. Has square footage of less than a third of that. The width of the proposed building is almost three times what most of the houses are. Even this significant reduction, yes, it's a significant reduction from. A frankly, appallingly large initial proposal. Um, the previous, the very first one was five stories, more than twice the height of most of the houses on the street. Um, there are still, there's twenty-seven units on this block of Nahant Street, so. Almost doubling it is just so far out of scale. And I am still frankly dumbfounded that Mass Housing wrote a letter of approval or whatever it was. Since this is directly contradicting their own guidelines of, um. That it is important to mitigate the height and scale of the buildings to adjoining sites. Most of which are two-story buildings with gable roofs, single-family, some two-family. And massing should take into account the pattern of the existing street frontage. Even the former Franklin School is significantly smaller than this proposal. Um, the, uh, the side setback, ten feet at the front, going down to nine feet. From the proposed fence, which would be, I believe, right on the lot line between our house and, um, the proposed site. So. What many people have said before and particularly what Mr. Tarbell have said, I agree with. Thank you to the board.
Thank you. Any other further public comment? Joanne, your name's being cut off, so I'm just sorry to bother you first name.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Joanne Bonfilio, and I live at thirteen Kathleen Drive. Uh, off of Nahant Street. And, you know, looking at this proposal, I think. What we all need to think about though is the other. Construction of the one hundred units that are going on Nahant Street. So I think in some ways, the timing of this project coming on the back of the other project with a hundred units. Currently, the traffic on Nahant Street is unbearable. On Nahant Street. Um, it's, is a two-lane road. Um, there are so many accidents pulling out of our street, have a blind corner. People tend to fly up Nahant Street. Um, the other thing that's been happening is people are now using Valley Street as a cup proof. I'm waiting for the neighbors on Valley Street. I have a feeling they're going to be up in arms soon. Um, with the increase in traffic. So, I mean, I understand this proposal. I also agree. I think it's too big. But I think coming on the back of the other hundred units, adding additional cars at this point. The timing for this is rather poor. I also did not like the Mr. Haverty's sort of threatening message to us. And I think you should let it always know that that was taken to me and I'm sure other people on this call is kind of a threat. To us, um, we are a community. Wakefield is a town. We have a real sense of community here. I mean, you're threatening us going to the state. We could say, well, we'll go to the Boston Globe. And Channel Five and Channel Four, let's bring them out. To the town and we can mention that, you know, we were actually threatened by the developer on one of these calls. I mean. I think, um, board, our board is doing a great job and they're kind of working with you. Um, we as the people who live here though, will, will share the brunt of this. And so you'll come in, you'll build and then you leave. And we're left, we're dealing with what's left behind. And that's really all.
Thank you. I would just say that, that, the, the, the fate of the other, um. Application down the street has not been decided yet, so. I want to make that clear, that there isn't a hundred units that are going to be built there as of right now. It's still an application before our board. Okay, anybody else? Going once, twice, three times. With that closing public comment, back to the board. Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we continue this matter to our October ninth meeting. And accept the, um, applicant's request to extend the, uh, the time for us to. Hold the public hearing to October thirty-first, pending a memo, uh, formalizing that, um, from the applicant, uh, by tomorrow.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, and then with that too, we'll, we'll, uh, anoint, uh, Chip Tarbell as our representative to work with. Mr. Jones and, uh, Mr. Sparages, so. All right, motion's been made and seconded. Um, any comment from board? Hearing seeing non-regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Matters continued. Thank you for your presentation. We'll, um. We'll be in touch, Mr. Havery. Do, um, if you email, I'll email you Chip's email address.
Andrew has it.
Andrew probably has it, yeah.
I'll email you Chip.
Okay.
Peace. Thanks, Andrew.
So you guys can work together to pull that together. All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, with that, moving on, next up, cases twenty-five twelve, twenty-five thirteen for five Sylvan Avenue. Think we've seen this one before.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yep.
Uh, for the record, uh, Attorney Brian McGrail, um, representing the applicants, uh. On this matter, Matthew Chambers and Caitlin Kavanaugh, who are the owners of Five Sylvan. Uh, this was before, year before. Uh, it involves, uh, a single-story addition on the house. If I could share my screen?
Please do.
And it was withdrawn without prejudice in order to, um. Organize the applications and resubmit, which has occurred. Um, and I think when the board last met on this, I think you, you, um, kind of stressed that you really didn't have an issue with it, was more procedural. And I've been able to help, uh, the applicants in that regard. Um, so to refresh the board's memory. This is a Connor lot in the general residence zoning district, Sylvan Ave and Gale Circle. This is an existing conditions plan. And what the applicants are proposing is a very modest, uh, simple, one-story addition. Uh, eight by ten off of the house in order to put a bathroom in. Um, from a zoning perspective, um, if you, this is a general residence district. So I think I kind of want to, want to point out the existing non-conformities. The first is lot area, eight thousand is required. This is sixty-five, thirty-five. Um, it has two frontages. One is sixty-one, which is Sylvan, so that's technically a deficiency, as would lot would be, would be. Um, so those are two, but interestingly, uh, the setbacks, the current setbacks meet all the requirements because in the. General Residence District, the side, side, side yard setback requirement is ten feet. It's fifteen on this side. Um, it's twenty here. Uh, this needs to be, um, fifteen. Because you have to meet the front setback on both streets, but it does currently. As well as on the Sylvan, because it's twenty-one. And the rear setback requirement is twenty and it's currently thirty-eight point three. So. So the deficiencies really now are, um, lot area. Uh, frontage and width. Um, I would respectfully suggest that, um, what's being proposed does not even, you know, hit the second prong on the finding application. There's two applications here, one for a finding because of the existing non-conformities. There's really no intensification of any of these existing non-conformities. Um, what there is, is, is a creation of a new non-conformity on this side where the addition's going to be. Because the requirement, uh, is twenty, is, um, uh, fifteen feet from the street. Currently twenty, so we can't do this via a finding because it already complies. And it's going to be twelve, so we're seeking a, a variance, uh, for this setback. And also. Um, there's an open area, open space deficiency here because of the addition, so it's under the thirty percent or twenty-five percent. So the forms of relief would be, uh, a finding in determining that, um, there's no intensifications of the existing non-conformities. And then a variance for, uh, the setback at open area. I think as far as the standards of a variance go, certainly unique circumstances because of the Connor lot, how it's situated. Um, the hardship is they, they, you know, as a growing family, they need to have a bathroom added on. Uh, which is being proposed in a reasonable fashion and certainly no detriment to the neighborhood. Um, I'd like to kind of show some photos. Uh, in that regard, this, this shows what they're really going to do, kind of a sketch on the inside of the bathroom. And you can see from the photos that they provided, there's really on this side over here. In a butt scale circle, so there's really no a butter, uh, impact whatsoever. It's going to come right off of this side and the fence will be moved or relocated. This is the side and this is, this just shows you how with Gale Circle, with the trees and. Is really a good separation from, from everybody with no impact. Um, so with that said, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Thank you. Uh, just before the board, uh, raises any questions or comments. Just wanted to note that we have two pieces of correspondence from the town. One from the, uh, Engineering Department of the D P W and one from the Conservation, uh, Commission. Neither one of those, uh, departments had any comments on this. So with that. I will open it up to board comments or questions.
Brian, have they reached out to any of the neighbors and is there any support in the neighborhood for this?
They really didn't, Chip, just because of the, you know, and I'll show it, this might help.
Put the site plan up again, if you could, and just really explain. That there are no, I don't think there are any neighbors.
Yeah, this might, this might help, Chip. Um, so this is just to take you virtual. So this is the Sylvan side and you can kind of see this house even faces Sylvan, so.
So it's going on the left side?
Yeah, it's going right. Yeah, it's going right. It's going right here.
Okay.
Right off of here. So this is, it's kind of like, there's just, it's one story and you have these trees that are a buffer.
Okay, thank you. I'm good.
Anybody else? Uh, Greg.
Hey, Brian, I just, I just wanted to make sure. So on the plot plan, the only change was they added bathroom, the. Patio and the deck were existing. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll um, i- if I recall right, we, I didn't really have a problem with the um. Even with some bad behavior by the applicant at the last meeting, I still don't have a problem with it. Um. So anybody else?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, I think I expressed my feelings last time that it on it on its face seemed to be a reasonable request and just making sure they.
Um, yeah, we needed.
Clarified the paperwork and all that, so.
Yeah, we needed the right application for sure.
Right, uh, but the explanation of the uh, the situation, the lot, the let, you know, being a corner lot and having to meet those both setbacks. Um, you know, it's a reasonable request in my mind and certainly the finding is is reasonable. Um, so I have no issues with it.
Anybody else?
I don't either.
No, I'm good. All right, with that, I'm going to now open it up to the public. Uh, there are members of the public here that have want to weigh in on this application. If you do, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. Seeing none going once, twice, three times. Back to the board. Pleasure of the board.
Brian, we should take the variance first, right?
Whatever you're comfortable, Mr. Head.
Okay, I didn't know if it mattered either way, but. Okay.
And it's for the setback in the opening, open area.
Yep. So, Mr. Chair, I move that we grant the variance pursuant to one ninety, uh, section one ninety sixty six of the bylaw. Uh, for the um, property of five Sylvan Avenue. Um, based on plans. That we've received from the site plan. From George C. Collins, PLS dated July eighth, twenty twenty four, and the architectural renderings uh provided, they're undated, but they were provided to us. Um. Um, and the variances from uh the requirements of um. Sorry, section six and table two of the zoning bylaw, uh, owing to circumstances of the uh shape, topography of the land and structures. Um, and that a little enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would provide substantial hardship, financials otherwise to partitioner. And the desire relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying. Or substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of this chapter and specifically the variances are for the front setback. Uh, to twelve feet where fifteen is required and the open space to twenty five percent where thirty percent was required. And that is my motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing seeing none, regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes. That's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I move that we grant a fighting determination pursuant pursuant to one, section one ninety fifty A of the bylaw. That the proposed uh changes and alterations at five Sylvan uh Avenue as presented this evening. Um, based on the plan, same plans uh mentioned on the previous motion. Um, shall not increase the existing non conforming uh nature of the structure. Um. Um, but it is deficient in lot area, lot frontage and lot width, uh, preexisting conditions. But if one were to uh find uh any non conforming uh nature or increase that we find that the proposed changes. Shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non conformities to the neighborhood.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments, discussion? Hearing seeing none, same voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes. Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes. That's unanimous.
I assume bill and suspenders are okay, Brian, right?
Yeah.
Did I get skipped, Mr. Chair?
Double prong, you said?
Yeah, no, I called you, Dane Chip. Did you not answer?
I don't think so. I didn't hear you call.
Okay, Chip.
I just want to make sure that Gale captures it in a minute.
It is unanimous.
Thanks. I don't know what happened there.
All right. Maybe I skipped out for a second. I don't know.
No, I'm.
So, okay, we're ready to move on. Next case, twenty five fourteen, twenty five fifteen at thirty nine Curtis Street. Mr. McGrail, is that you as well?
It is, Mr. Chair. Uh, for the record, Attorney Brian McGrail, representing Barry and Julianne Fennel. Uh, with their property at um thirty nine Curtis Curtis Street. Um, the Fennels are um. Looking to do an addition, um, which I'll get into. Um, they have some unique circumstances. Um, just a little background, the impetus for this uh addition is um. That they are a growing family. They've become foster parents in July of two thousand twenty two to two siblings. Um, they're, they have, they're pre adoptive parents to one of the children aged two and the legal guardian of the other child at age fifteen. Uh, in addition, they just welcomed a baby who's four months into the family. So this is a true growing family that needs space. Um. And I just kind of want to, you know, set the table for the reason for uh the request for the addition, which I'll go into some detail. And you might have noticed this references uh asking for relief for for the lot as well and. I've got to kind of walk you through this because it's a little bit of an historic uh situation going back to the nineteen sixties. Uh, in my application, and I'm bringing it up on the screen now, I included um a zone, prior zoning decision. And what this decision did, it allowed um the Fennels' lot to be created back in nineteen sixty. Uh, it was originally. Part of uh fifty three Butler and they cut the lots. In two, and you'll notice that it says lot forty forty eight B, which was the Butler Ave one. Shall have an area of thirteen two fifty four with frontage of one oh three. And. The Fennel lot, which obviously they didn't own at that time, was to be ten thousand square feet with frontage of a hundred feet on Curtis Street. And back then, they weren't as sophisticated or detailed as your board is because you can kind of see the sketch plan that was submitted. Uh, as part of that variance, um, which is in the file and they just kind of. They just kind of cut it in two and said like with no dimensions on any of the lots. So what happens is. Um, and I gotta bring up another plan. In nineteen eighty nine. Again, uh, before the Fennel's own this property. They do a, they do a, an approval not required plan at the planning board and what they do is they. Take a piece of the Fennel lot, this triangle. Um, and they give it to fifty three. And and so, you know, Gale and I looked, I said, there had to be some zoning relief here, you know, how did they do this? And there's no decisions on it because. It makes this lot deficient. Um, and it adds to this. And I think, I think what they were doing at this point, but there's no way to tell. I think they were trying to kind of do a plan that was consistent with the prior zoning decision I just showed you because if you remember. It said that this lot was gonna have approximately thirteen and a half thousand, thirteen five. So they took this to add and this one was supposed to be ten. So the remainder was ninety nine twenty four. But we can't find anything on that. So my goal is 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 to kind of clean that up. And and hopefully you would entertain as part of the variance. Uh, to confirm that that this ninety nine twenty four lot area is fine. Uh, in addition to lot width because that would become an issue the way they jogged this line in. Um, and then we have other variances that I'm gonna get into, but that's just kind of the history of this lot. Like, you know, and. When I looked at this, I went, you know, Gale was kind enough to look and do a search and I did and we figured we're gonna find some type of variance that went with this, but there was nothing on record. At the registry and nothing on record um at Town Hall. So we just would like to kind of clean that up. It is consistent with what was stated back then because it did say it was gonna be ten thousand square feet. But it's just kind of odd how it was done after the fact and there's no way to relate it back to that variance.
Brian, what does the town card show?
But the, the town, the assesses plan show uh what I just showed you, Chip.
With the triangle.
With the triangle, yeah. Yeah, and you and you'll see that in a minute when I bring it up on um, on Maps Geo. I can actually show you now. So this is a. This is the uh GIS with the town. Can you see it?
Can you blow it up?
Yep.
I see a red dot.
Having a hard time blowing it up.
Hit Control plus in your browser.
I, I got it.
You got it now?
Yeah.
Thanks, Dave. Learned something every day.
Yeah, Control plus plus minus does a zoom in the browser tab, but anyway.
So that's a jog.
So it's been recorded with the town?
Oh, yeah, it's recorded with the town. That's the lot. It's recorded at the registry of deeds. That's their lot. So.
It is recorded at the registry of deeds.
Yep.
So there's no question the lot is the lot.
The lot is a lot. Yep, that plan's on record and the deed is based on that plan.
Okay, but there's just no record of.
When, how it happened, yeah.
I just, you know, it's just really odd um that, you know, the the. The engineer at the time, you know, because don't forget when you do an approval not required plan at the planning board, alls they look at is frontage and they put a. They put a notation on the plan that this, you know, this doesn't guarantee it complies with zoning because that's what the statute requires them to do. They have to sign the plan if it has the frontage. So maybe at that time, the planning board said, you got a problem here, but you know, we have to sign the plan. But there was nothing tied in and I think they were just trying to become consistent with the lot areas that were referencing that variance. Back in nineteen sixty. Because you saw the rudimentary plan that was kind of included with that. But I would, I would like to take the opportunity to clean that up with the Fennels as long as we're here so it doesn't become an issue when they. Eventually go to uh sell the property at some point in their lifetime.
And what is the lot width? You said that there's deficient. The zoning table doesn't actually say.
Yeah, it's, you know, I I I don't know the exact, Dave. I would like it, you know, I'd like relief to the extent needed. Because that wasn't calculated. But if I, if I can get into the, what they, let me get into now what they want to do because that might help. Um. What they're requesting. So this is the current um site plan. Um, and what, or the proposed site plan, the the box of the house is here. And they're looking to put on a two story addition with a two car garage and master bedroom above. Um, and um, they have some wonderful architectural plans that will give you some context. Um, we do have a zoning table down here, so uh lot area requirement is twelve thousand. Um, we're at, as you know, nine nine two four. Uh, lot frontage and width, it's a hundred here, but I think here. You know, potentially we have an issue and and I'd like to just to the extent necessary for the existing house in addition to get a variance for the lot width. Um, the front setback is met. It's not changing at twenty three. Um, the side setback required is fifteen. It's currently twenty six point seven. They're looking to go to six and. I think there's justification with that on the jog of the lot line and they they are twenty feet. Um, from the structure next door, which is a garage and I'll show you that. So I don't think there's significant impact on the neighbor. The neighbors are actually in support of this, which I'll get into in a minute. Um, the the others, the um, other setback is not even close. It's thirty three feet. Um, the um, rear, the rear setback is not even close, required twenty five forty three point seven, existing proposed thirty six. The number of stories will be complied with, the height will be complied with, building coverage in open area will also be complied with. Um. I'm gonna go to the architecturals, if I may. So this is the existing home. Can see all the space they all have over here with a big driveway. Um. This is the footprint. The first floor. Second floor, they want to expand the office, master bath, master closet and master bedroom. This shows the roof lines, how they'll tie in. And kind of work with the lot line. Um, this is a front elevation. As you know, it's turned. Kind of see that from this side. This is a side facing the lot line. And that lays it out and let me, let me show you now kind of the impact from the neighbor uh perspective, but I guess before I do that, um, and I'll send this to you. Uh, after the meeting tonight for the record, Mr. Chair, we do have um significant um neighbor support on this. Folks at fifty three Butler Ave who are immediately uh next door. Uh, are supportive. Uh, thirty eight and forty are across the street and all the other neighbors, even on the other side, thirty seven, thirty four. Are in support of the uh, of the project and I think this will be helpful to give you a. So this is, these neighbors are fifty three are in support and. You can see the house is pretty set, set far away. This is a garage which you'll see in more detail in a minute. Your butt is in the back of the um, uh, the St. Florence Church. And these folks are in support and all of these folks are in support as well. Uh, but this is, I think, really helpful to kind of take a little walk to show. Um, you can see where this addition will go. You've got some unique topography here with the, the way the lot line is shaped. It fits in nicely. Uh, and even though these folks support it, there's really little impact because the the twenty foot is from the garage. Um, versus uh the house.
Brian, there's a lot of vegetation that you're showing us there along that that side. Is any of that gonna be affected?
No, I don't think so. Barry, are you here? Do you want to mute for a minute?
Uh, yes, I am. Hi, um.
Did you introduce yourself for the record, Barry, with your.
Yes, I'm Barry Fennel, the uh property owner at thirty nine Curtis Street. Um, that that photo actually was probably taken uh pre, four or five years ago. So since then, that neighbor has actually trimmed back some of that vegetation. Uh, but that fence remains intact and that will be the goal. They've um added a wall in here and they put some flower beds in. A, a lot of those trees are down already, but the one in the front is is still there. So. Um. Yeah, it 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 would, the the garage would really go where those two cars are right now and the room are above it in in this photo and the. And but that fence would remain.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
I mean, as far as the um, you know, we've asked for a finding because of the non conformities, I I don't think there's any. Uh, intensification of the existing non conformities, um, which are really lot area, lot width. Um, because the current setbacks, as we discussed, uh, are mess. Um, and um, as far as the variants go, it it is unique circumstances with the shape of the lot. Uh, with that. Uh with that line, right where this is going to go. Um and um you know, the hardship is, I I've explained the family situation, uh the need for them to expand. Uh and then as far as um, you know, the detriment to the um neighborhood, there, you know, this full neighborhood support for this. Um.
Yeah, I'd I'd also note, Brian, that if they had done the A and R. And created that pie shape, then they would have created their own weird lot, and they didn't. So they're within a, they're working within kind of a strange situation, so. I'm in agreement with you that the uh shape of the lot is certainly a reason for a variance. In my eyes. And I think they're doing it faithfully.
Is that the entirety of your presentation, Brian?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right, before we get to board comments, couple um correspondents from town departments. I don't know if you've seen these, Brian, from the DPW, given the um addition of a bedroom, the INI fee. Uh and then they have another one um. Says the provided plot plan shows a change in the existing driveway. Prior to the driveway renovations commencing, the applicant's contractor will be required to file a. Right-of-way utility permit with the engineering division and pay all associated fees. Proposed dimensions and grades will be required as part of the permit, have you seen that?
Yes. Got it today, Gail, thank you.
Yeah, and then the um conservation commission. Uh has no comment, so with that, uh we've heard Chip. Uh any other board members with questions or comments?
No, Mr. Chair, again, it seems like a reasonable request, and it's an opportunity to clean up. Um the lot situation um with the variance, and uh I have no problem with it.
Anybody else?
I concur with Dave as well.
Well, seeing um hi, Mr. Chair, um seeing as it's the garage and not the house, that makes a um. Big difference, uh just one question, um Brian, it's it's going from, on the right side, it's going from. What it, what does it need there, twenty fifteen?
Yes, tw- it's fifteen feet uh is required, and it's going to six, um, Mr. Field.
Okay.
Anybody else? Hearing seeing none, going to at this point open up to members of the public, if you're here to. Testify in this application, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. Hey, not seeing anyone going once, twice. Back to the board, pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chair, I move that we grant a variance pursuant to section one ninety-sixty-six of the bylaw. Uh for the property at thirty-nine Curtis Street. Based on the plans presented this evening, uh the site plan, Boston Survey Inc. Dated August fifth, twenty twenty-four, and the architectural plans from Derek Rubenoff dated August eighth, twenty twenty-four. Um from the um. Uh requirements of Article Six and Table Two with respect to the side setback. Um uh being going to six feet where fifteen feet is required. Owing to circumstances related to the shape and topography of the land and structures. That a little enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the petitioner. And that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter.
So Dave, the only thing I'd ask you to add is that uh that it should comply with the conditions that being sought by the DPW memo.
All right, amended uh motion as as stated.
If I could just pipe in, if uh Mr. Haffield, if you're gonna address the lot area um in the um. Lot width at the same time on the variance?
Oh, oh, it's the previous one I was planning to do with the finding, cuz they're existing.
That needs to be done as a variance because it's 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 they're new, um and so um. We've applied for those as part of the variance, which I think is a requi- it would be the requirement.
Okay, all right.
If you would consider that, we'd appreciate it.
No, not an issue, I just, thanks for clarifying, so I will amend the motion. And the the variance uh request is, in addition to the side setback. The lot area, which isn't changing, of ninety-nine twenty-four, nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-four square feet. And the lot width, to the extent needed uh to um construct the proposed addition on the home. Uh as presented in the plans, um based on the conditions uh provided by um the other town uh officials.
Second the amended motion.
Yep, thanks.
Motion's been made seconded, any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes, that is unanimous.
All right, so Brian, but those other elements still apply for the finding as well, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I move that we grant a finding and determination pursuant to the section one ninety fifty A, the bylaw. That the proposed uh reconstruction changes, extensions, and alterations at thirty-nine Curtis Street. Based on the same plans uh referenced in the prior prior motion. Um shall not increase the existing non-conforming nature of said structure with respect to the lot area and the lot width. But if one were determined such an increase did exist. We also find that the proposed reconstruction changes, extensions, and alterations shall not be substantially more detrimental. Than the existing non-conformities to the neighborhood.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded, any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, Dave?
Yes.
Joe? Joe?
Yes, yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes, that too unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, good luck, Mr. Fennel. On for the board, on to other matters, case twenty-four, forty-two seventy-five, the Han Street, uh. A minor modification. Believe that's your case too, Mr.
It is, Mr. Chair, um this is uh regarding Josh Mercurio at um seventy-nine nine, seventy-five Nahan Street, Josh is here tonight. Uh this was a finding that took place uh, I think about six months ago, Josh is planning, uh he's in the business district on the Han Street. That's an existing single-family dwelling, uh he's obtained approval from your board to raise that. Single-family dwelling and construct a new single-family dwelling. Unfortunately, um my client's appetite uh for architectural design was a little bit too much, so when. We got uh pricing from contractors, uh it's not financially feasible, so he's actually looking to shrink. Uh the project or the building, so we're requesting your consideration of this as a minor modification. Um I can, let me bring up both site.
Are they still raising and rebuilding?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'll start with the uh. With the site plans, um. Second, that's not the one I wanna show you. Okay, so you can see the footprint on on this, this was what you've already approved. Um notice the six point four here, which when I bring up the new plan is not gonna change. Um this is gonna significantly change, it's gonna go from thirteen feet, it's gonna be pushed back to, I think, about twenty-three. And this is gonna come in also, so he's really, as you'll see on the site plan that we're gonna bring up. He's shrinking the size of the foundation, which is resulting in re- in reducing the, in increasing the setback from the Han Street and this and this lot line. Um so you notice the shape, and this is kinda where the expense came in with what was being proposed here. So now that you've seen that, I'm gonna bring up the. New footprint. This has stayed the same at six point four, this went from thirteen all the way back to twenty-three. Um so he's really pulling it further away from the Han Street, you can see how the size has has shrunk down. This went from forty-four, now it's forty-six, and this has has gone back significantly from the neighbor as well. And I'm gonna show you the architecturals, what we were doing.
And Brian, what's on the right side?
Just a house, Chip.
Is there no way to take that back right-hand corner and and get it a little bit farther away from the lot line?
Not with the driveway, the way it comes in.
All right, you wanna keep the driveway.
Because the gar- the garage under is here, so they gotta be able to maneuver.
Okay. So the answer is no?
No. Um, okay. And I think the builders on the board will understand the expense with what was proposed. So this is what was proposed. As you can see, it's, you know, got a lot of, lot of roof lines, jogs that went with that foundation. And what we're looking to change it to. And to remind the board, and I think you know it, but just to point it out, this is only a finding. Um there was no like special permit, but you do incorporate the plans, and that's why we have to come back. And this is what's being proposed, just a a nice colonial, lot simpler to build, more economical to build. And there's a garage chip on the on the left side under, which I talked about.
Yeah, we improved something bigger, so I I don't have a problem with it, and I'm. Just like last time, happy to see single-family homes on the Han Street for a change.
And it's still gonna be improvement over what's there.
Yes.
As anyone who drives up and down that street notices this building, so it was in dire need. Um Brian, the the date on the uh architecturals, it looks like it says twenty twenty, unless I'm missing a revised date.
Yeah, might have just been a plan that they used, so the the building plans are dated. Um because.
Got the site plan from September.
Yeah, they dated January twenty-eight, two thousand twenty, Colonial drafting.
Okay, so they must have had that.
They're just, these are just, you know, plans you buy, Dave, so.
Okay. Okay, just making sure I got the date right.
You need the site, new site plan too, or you already have that?
I got the site plan, and that's dated September third. Terranzoni, yeah.
Correct, yep.
I'm good, Mr. Chair.
All right, any other comments, questions from the board? This is a minor mod, so I'm I'm not feeling like we have to open it up to the public here, so. Uh pleasure of the board at this point.
Mr. Chair, I move that we find and determine that the proposed changes at seventy-five Nahan Street, based on the plans presented this evening. Site plan from David P. Terranzoni. Uh PLS dated September third, twenty twenty-four, and the architectural renderings from Colonial drafting dated January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. Are minor modifications to the previously approved um or um finding and determination granted by this board.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made seconded, any further discussion or comments? Hearing seeing none, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, on to clerk board comments, Joe, you got anything?
No, other than that email I sent out earlier. On the uh North Ave, that uh mock-up panel is all set.
Where is it, Joe? Just go in the main driveway off of um.
You can see it, it's right there.
It's right near the trailer.
Okay, just going from Lowell Street?
North Ave. The North Ave might be easier.
Oh, North Ave side, that's what I was. Well, the last time we went for a site visit, the the main, they they told us to go in that other side. I thought that's where the main construction trail.
Well, this is for the project next to the KFC, Dave.
What's that?
It's for the project next to the KFC.
Oh, that one, okay, I was mixing it up with two hundred Q, never mind.
It's not two hundred Q.
Never mind. That one's still in the works, is that?
I I I actually, I run by that like three days a week, it's like half done, the one um. For uh Callahan, that one's just about done, I don't know, Brian may have an answer on that, but.
Yep, I I do, real quick, if you want, um uh they're working on that, and they're also ready, willing, and able to attend whatever meeting you want them to attend for the update. I talked to them about that, so I know you've got these forty Bs going, if you wanna wait, or they can come October ninth, or they can come the twenty-third, whatever. On November, whatever works for the board.
I think October ninth, cuz I don't think either forty B's gonna be ready.
No.
Okay. Gail, could you? Thank you.
Yeah, Brian, if you talk to them, if there's a good point for us to go out there and see some progress, I haven't really been to the site, I I wasn't able to attend the event they had. Cuz a a work-related matter, but. When there's enough progress that you think it might be nice for the board to be able to go out there, um keep that in the back of your mind.
Well, they got, they got two buildings almost weather tight, and they got the parking garage done, so they're well on the way.
Okay. All right, uh the only thing I'll offer uh from my perspective is that, at some point, we have to have a conversation. About the re-classification of the zoning, I know Joe, uh Joe, you've been sitting on that committee. I I'm not ready to discuss it tonight, we have to make up our minds, do we wanna comment it as a board, do we wanna stay as individuals? I have some opinions on that, I'm I'm gonna share as an individual, but I don't know. If those opinions are shared by board members, we might wanna carve out some time. On a light agenda night to to discuss those and see if we wanna, we might not be able to come to a place where we all agree and to to put something in as a board. I don't know, but if you guys can put your heads around that a little bit and think about how we might participate in that process.
I think we could prob- I think we could probably come up with a statement from the board, as well as individuals if necessary.
There there is an upcoming meeting, um October twenty-first is the next meeting that we're gonna have for the bylaw review committee, so. Just throwing it out there, if someone wants to attend, they're more than happy to, uh. Bobrovsky will uh be at that meeting to go over what he's come up with so far, so.
Um Joe, was there any discussion about um, or hasn't been any discussion about. Parking requirements and possibly raising them as a town?
I think we talked about it, but I don't think we raised it. I think we left it as it was. It's it's been, I don't know, it's been like six months since I had the last meeting, but yeah, I don't remember us raising it. I think, if anything, I think we were talking about decreasing it.
Yeah, most cities and towns are going that way.
I know, because of the, because of, yeah.
He's Boston, no requirement.
I mean, I haven't gone to those meetings, so I I I feel like I don't have what I'm gonna say, but um just as.
I think it's still early enough, Mickey, that shouldn't uh, that shouldn't prevent you from trying to catch up a little bit and from. And to Joe's point, they haven't met in six months, so. I I. I think there's plenty of time for us to weigh, and I think we should, and again, whether or not we can come to some agreement around some comments, that would be great, otherwise. If you have an opinion, a personal opinion on the parking, I I think as someone that sits here. Twice a month for every meeting, you've seen it, you you probably have some strong feelings on it, I'd feel free to jump in.
Just when things get pushed back, because, I mean, restaurants downtown and things like that, that pull back and projects stop because. The reality of it is, there's not enough parking, so you're not gonna have a fancy restaurant down there, I don't know how that's gonna happen. Ever. Um and just, I I agree that downtown's been my personal thing, but. Um and they need more people and traffic and residents in the middle of town, but um. It's hard to do much of anything down there, and um if people can't park, so that's my personal feeling.
Only we had a garage.
If only we. I didn't mean to scratch that edge.
Yeah, yeah, so, but to, um I don't know if Kirsten or Greg have had much background on this, Joe, I don't know if this information you can forward them, this is like. Ongoing discussion about updating all of our zoning bylaws, like re-going through the entire. Chap- section one ninety and perhaps updating, updating it to mod- you know, modernize and, you know, um.
Yep.
Um make things more consistent and whatever, Joe, I'm sure you have a better explanation, but this has been going on for a while, it's not over yet. But there's there's an opportunity to attend these meetings and weigh in and review things, but some of it is. Perhaps not what we would wanna see, but.
All right.
No, it's it's, but you know, to to Bobrovsky's point, you know. No, it's, it's, but, you know, to, to Bobrovsky's point, you know, he's been doing this a long time, so he's been kinda steering the ship. And taking comments from our board and other boards about, you know.
Yeah.
He, you know, of what he has, sort of opinion and whether we shoot it down or go with it, um.
But like this cookie cutter approach, you know, sort of like, hey, other towns do have these sections and they lay these things out and this is. This is what they have requirements for and this is what they don't, and again, it may or may not be something we wanna. Entertain or, or agree to in, in this town, but.
That, that's.
Because it might work in other towns, right? So.
That, that's a big concern for me, that, that, I think, and by the way, it's not lost on me that he. All our volunteer time is being used up by these forty Bs and his firm represents one of them, so, um, that's. Not lost on me, so, uh.
But it could, Greg, if there's info what you want, I don't know, Joe, you can forward something. Again, there's a lot of history here, but like.
I can, yeah, I can.
Page or a link to the latest spec, you know, presentations or that kind of thing, where if they wanna sort of read up on it a little bit and get involved.
Yeah, I, I have a, I have a Dropbox folder. I gotta find it and find what the latest and greatest is that he's going through. Um, it's still gonna get voted by the town too, so it doesn't mean anything.
No, I didn't, I don't. I don't wanna be a town meeting fighting something out. I'd rather try to influence it in the process.
I hear.
I did go through it, Dave. There is the latest document. It's, it's a slog, for sure, uh, to get through the whole thing, uh. And it's, it's, it's a multi-hour effort. That's all I'll say, so, um.
And to try to think about what we have today and what is being proposed and. You know, whether some of it's, you know, for the better and some of it is, you know, maybe not in our, again, in our minds. But it might make sense to others, so we're just trying to.
No, but I, I, I think it's, as the board that deals with the zoning all the time, that we should have an opinion.
Well, we, we just, we, we see what gets bounced, we see what doesn't get, you know, and, and we, we hear. All the, uh, residents and.
But, uh, uh, yeah, and same, I've, I've seen what Cambridge has tried to do, I've seen with Boston, Somerville. And some of the stuff on the surface sounds like a good idea and it doesn't work and it has unintended consequences, so, um. Some of the stuff I saw in there falls into that category, so, um, anyway.
That said, thank you, Joe.
Yeah.
Tom, was it December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three? Is that the one that you reviewed? That's the one I just found online. I don't know.
Have to look at it, but it, what they, the one I looked at, Joe, and help me out. I think it, it kinda showed where the changes were, so it was a little bit easier to follow through, so you weren't just reading this abstract.
No, this is highlighted in black line.
Highlight, yeah, whatever's highlighted is, has been changed.
Yeah, so you didn't have to have the current zoning next year on one side and the proposal on the other side, so.
Okay, so Joe wouldn't think it's the twenty, twenty-three one, December is the most current? It's draft one, Wakefield.
I'd have to look on Dropbox here. Um, I thought we were past draft one, that we're up to like four or five, to be honest with you, but, um.
So much.
Joe, if you can just send a link around to the latest, then I think we can.
Yes, let me find it tonight and I'll send it out at one point.
Perfect.
Yeah, no hurry, Joe.
Yeah, thank you.
I think we got time. And the next meeting's not till the twenty-first, so, um. And we don't have to, you don't have to have every answer before then either, it's just.
And we have nothing going on between then and now, so.
Yeah, exactly. My volunteer time has been filled, uh.
Well, Chip, the whole board, it's on all the soul, help.
Speaking of volunteer time, Kasumi and I had a wonderful time at Town Day.
They did not go.
How wet was it?
How wet was it? It was so wet.
It was very cold.
Ducks were coming out of the lake.
Why did they go forward? They had announced the rain day.
I, they had to make a decision on Thursday and they, I guess, as a Thursday, because of the food vendors and everything. And as of Thursday, the, their forecast was still kinda iffy on the, in the afternoon, anyway, they thought it might clear out, so. Well, hindsight, Sunday was a much nicer day, but we braved it. We, um, we had a few visitors. Um, and we, um, did our best to just respond to things and questions and, uh. And we were, we were at the same table basically with, um, Sam, the town planner. Uh, cause nobody showed up with a pop-up tent for her, so she would have been in the rain, so she came under our umbrella and, and, and under our tent and. And, uh, we, we, um, entertained the few people who came by, um, as well as, um, you know, Steve Mayo came by. Um, some of the town councilors, so, you know, it was good in, in that respect, just talking to folks and, and, um. You know, responding to things, but as you can imagine, there just wasn't a large turnout, so overall. But we did our thing. It was, it was okay.
Well, thanks for doing that, guys. I was hoping when it was raining that it, it wasn't gonna happen.
Us too, us too.
No good deed goes unpunished, for sure.
There were actually a lot more people than I thought there, it'll be.
Yeah, there were families and strollers and bellas and.
Kids riding around.
Right, if we hadn't to be there, if we didn't have to be there, I can't imagine we would have said, yeah, let's go, you know. But they have clinics, they had all the tables set up and, you know, the, there were, there were people there, but clearly not as many as.
I'm sure all those families wanted to talk zoning too, so I'm sure you have.
Well, when I did it two years ago, our table was kind of right at the entrance where the stone church, like right where you enter off of, um, like.
The corner there, yeah.
And so we got a lot of the initial foot traffic and with the board up and all the pictures, I think there was just a lot more, people tended to stop more and, and inquire. Um, this layout was totally different. We were kinda at the end, um, so people kinda had to make their way over across the field to us, but. Um, anyway, it is what it is. It was interesting. But thanks, Kasumi.
Yeah, thank you.
You were brave soul too.
You know, we have, um, is there anything else anyone wants to bring up?
I got your email, Joe. Thank you.
Did it go out?
Yeah.
Draft two? All right. See, I can mount the task.
Before we approve these minutes, Gail, I'm sure they are perfect, but I have not had, uh, a lot of time. That September fifth meeting for me is gonna be an important one, so I want an extra meeting. To go over our special meeting with the two forty B minutes to make sure, um. So I, I'd ask everyone that was at the September fifth meeting to take a little extra time there to read through those minutes.
Yeah.
Uh, like, Gail, I'm sure they're perfect, but.
Oh, I, I wouldn't go that far and I, uh, you know, no, I welcome any comments.
Yeah, we. So let's hold, let, let's hold off on the, the minutes for September fifth.
Okay.
And, uh, I think the September eleventh is pretty straightforward and, and look good, so.
Okay. I agree.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the minutes of our September eleventh, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Now, this can be both, uh, uh, blah, blah, blah. Voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right against? No, thank you, Gail. And with that, I think we are done.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Again, voice vote does it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you for.
Good night.